Thanks for being here today. Mayor Protem, you don't have any announcements for us?
Well, I did think of one thing, Mayor, thank you. October the 19th, we're going to do our first, but really fun, and want everybody to come out to our Everybody's Hometown Festival. And it's going to be a great event. We've been on the radio talking about it a little bit, so please come out. It's going to be good food, good fun, things for the whole family. So I hope you all will join us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Today, we have an invocation with Reverend Jesse Burke with Sanctuary Covenant Church, and then the pledge led by Councilman Lamerson.
Father God, as we gather in this room today, we want to pause and acknowledge the fact that everything we have is a gift from you, and that we're meant merely stewards of the incredible gifts, the responsibilities, the duties that you've given to us. And so as we gather here today in this room with these people, and look at all the responsibilities, and the privileges, and the gifts that you've given, and that are represented in this room, Lord, we ask for your wisdom. We ask for your help as we steward these things, as we take on the great responsibility of caring for people in this town, caring for this town and its future, and caring for the needs, caring for its people, and caring for the environment, and caring for just all the incredible things you've given us. Lord, we pray for the elected officials here, that you give them wisdom, that you give them strength, that you give them guidance as they steward these gifts of yours well for our city. Just be with them in this meeting today, be with them as they go about their duties. And, Lord, we do thank you for these gifts. We thank you for being in a time and a place where we can meet like this, in a country that's free, in a country that is growing, and is a country that is blessed. And so, Lord, we ask your continued blessing on us in this time together. We pray these things all in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Burke. Let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Yes.
Councilman Shishka.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you for that. Let's move on to proclamations.
The first one is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2019. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you for having us. Hi. Proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of control in an intimate relationship where one person uses coercion and violence to gain power and control over his or her partner, and whereas domestic violence includes not only physical abuse, but also mental, emotional, and financial abuse, isolation, and sexual violence, and whereas intimate partner violence does not discriminate, and whereas nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner annually in the U.S., and whereas the Arizona Governor's Office of Youth, Faith, and Family reports that at least 100 fatalities in Arizona due to domestic violence during 2016, and whereas 30 to 60% of perpetrators of intimate partner violence also abuse children in the household, and whereas intimate partner violence is most common against women between ages of 18 and 24, and whereas it is estimated the costs of intimate partner violence in the United States is between $5.8 and $12.6 billion annually, and whereas by working together in this community, we can break the cycle of violence. Now therefore, Greg L. Mangarelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, does hereby proclaim October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words? Please. I always feel awkward with mayor and council behind us, but thank you, Mayor and council, for recognizing and approving this proclamation. Domestic violence is a serious crime that's not biased by race, religion, sexual orientation, financial, or community stature. Public awareness, education, community involvement are essential to supporting victims of domestic violence. When city leadership recognizes and supports this, you are taking action to support our citizens, and we are creating a coordinated community effort which creates a safer and healthier environment for all of us. Thank you again for your support. (APPLAUSE).
Item 6B, please.
Colonial Heritage Month, October 2019.
You have some Colonials out there.
(LAUGHING).
Come on up. How are you?
Really excited about this.
Is that everybody? Okay, it's a proclamation for Colonial Heritage Month. Whereas Jane George Chapter of the National Society of Colonial Dames, 17th century of Prescott, Arizona, is locally sponsoring National Colonial Heritage Month during the month of October 2019, and whereas National Colonial Heritage Month brings to mind the first courageous settlers who arrived in America and who determined the direction for the formation of this country, and whereas the members of this society, by virtue of their lineal descent from those early arrivals, feel an obligation to work for preservation of priceless legacy and these early arrivals left to all American citizens, and whereas they continue to convey the true meaning of the inheritance by reminding us all of our privilege to live in a free country has stemmed from living our country, obeying its laws, respecting its flag, defending it against all enemies. Now therefore, Greg L. Mangarelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as Colonial Heritage Month, and encourages all citizens of the City of Prescott to observe this month as a means of reinforcing the priceless legacy that we inherited with our citizenship. Would you like to say a few words?
Colonial dames of the 17th century is open to all women who are 18 years or older, and they need to have an ancestor who was here in this country as 1701 or earlier. And we are very involved in our community, and especially our veterans. We take great care and great concern for all our veterans. Thank you. Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
Okay, let's go to item 7A, please.
Friends of Jersey Lily Courthouse Lighting Fundraiser.
Believe it or not, I used to front up here, but this time, this thing, anyhow, thank you very much. This is our 14th time being here, and Councilman Blair and Lamerson have donated every single year to this advantage.
Well, hey, Gary, thank you, and I've always wanted to be a first at something, so I'll be a first here today to say, here's my hundred.
Susan, collect.
And also, here is a $500 gift certificate for my business as well.
And Gary, like in the past...
We're embarrassing them all into that. Love that.
Very like, in the past, we've provided you with an auction item, or door prize, however you choose to use it, that's comparable to what Blair gave you, only it's a watch.
Believe me, Councilman Lamerson, we appreciate it, and I know the mayor is going to be helping with the auction, and I know that Councilman Shishka's family has always donated, and I'll consider that you'll do it again this year. If you don't, I'll tell Kathy.
Do I have a choice?
It's on public record and TV, Steve.
And Gary, I might add that the Oars start their Christmas shopping that night, and we've purchased a lot.
You know, I know that.
Oh, my gosh.
I know that you've done it every year.
I recommend everybody start their Christmas shopping that night at Jersey Lily, some really nice things, so thank you.
Well, I hope you have plenty of neon bar signs for Billy.
Yeah, we're about filled up in our space, though.
Steve, I can't comment, but I thank all of you for what you've done. And here's a copy of our flyer, and we've changed it up this year, and the fundraiser is going to be on the 7th of November, but the actual drawing is going to be three different items, and one is the bronze donated by Brad Williams, the second is a diamond pendant from Raskin Jewelers, and the third is a set of Michelin tires, including the tax, and he pays the tax and the balancing, and it's worth about 1,500 bucks. And if you've bought Michelin tires, Mayor, you know how expensive they are.
Yes, they are.
But anyhow, this event will be on November the 7th, for the auction, and the drawing will be later on. If you, $25 for one raffle ticket, 200 for 15, and so on and so forth, a maximum of 50, no matter how much you give us, because we can't print that many tickets. But thank you very much for the time, and all the support, and thank you for helping with the auction.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Gary. It's my pleasure to help with the auction, and my auctioneering buddy is back here. You guys didn't let him talk, but Tommy Meredith.
Do I see him back there?
He's back there.
All right, Tommy.
Good to see you, Tommy.
There we go.
There you go. All right, let's move on to item 7B, please.
Hard to believe this is our 4th class that's graduating. That's really awesome. So, and I understand we have about 11 spaces left in our next class, and when does that start, Tyler?
January 9th.
January the 9th, so if you're interested in taking the class, it's fantastic, and there are about 11 spaces left, so you want to make sure that you get signed up. So if you are graduating today from our Citizens Academy, come on up. Very excited to have you here. Tyler, would you like to say something?
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, this class number four is a great one, a special one, and come on up here, yes, yeah, right behind us here. That way, there's plenty of space. We had 23 participants in this class, and I, the eight-week course, we cover all the city departments, really engaged class, I would say, a lot of deep and philosophical questions even, but it was a really good experience, and we're excited to keep going. Another class is lined up. If you'd like to sign up and have it, you can do it on our city website, and like Billy mentioned, there's 11 spots left, so time's kind of running out.
All right, I get the privilege of introducing these folks and giving them their diploma. We will start with Rudy Hernandez. Congratulations, Rudy. Really appreciate you being here. Terry Christensen. You know, it's amazing how many of these people have already been so involved in our city and different things that they're doing. Several ambassadors, Terry helped us a lot with Proposition, helped us with Proposition 443. Sharon Slaughter. Sharon is also an ambassador. Petra. Petra Case, also an ambassador. Thank you. Michael Padgett. There you are. Congratulations, Michael. And Kathy Horton.
Wait to see you.
Lyndy Montgomery. Congratulations, Lyndy, appreciate it. Lori Kennedy. How are you, Lori?
How are you, sweetie?
I'm doing great. Lori's also helping us on another committee, so thank you so much, also an ambassador. Janice Sherman. Thank you, Janice. Congratulations. Janet Stephen. Thank you, Janet. Jerry Kaufman. The female Jerry Kaufman. And now, the other Jerry Kaufman.
Thank you very much.
Fran Russell. Fran and Dan. Fran Russell and Dan Russell. Congratulations to you guys. Congratulations.
I'm thrilled.
Connie Martin. Congratulations, Connie.
Thank you.
And Darrell Templeton. Darrell, congratulations. Good to see you. And Cindy Templeton.
Good to see you, guys.
And Bobette Sanchez. Bobette is also on our Bicycle Pedestrian Traffic Committee. And our final one is for Vivian Hernandez, and Vivian, we're going to ask you to say a few words.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well, I'm Vivian Hernandez, and my husband is Rudy Hernandez, and we are here enjoying everything that Prescott has to offer. I want to say thank you to Mayor Mangarelli, Protem Orr, the City Council, and Mr. Tyler Goodman. They've all been so nice to us, and we have enjoyed the academy. It's been great. We've learned a lot, we've laughed a lot, we've met a lot of new people, and one thing I want to say is I really enjoyed meeting Chief Debbie Black from the Police Department. It was great to be in their department. The Fire Department was great. We enjoyed everything, and every department was so good to us and brought us so much information to explore the community. We just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Vivian.
Oh, sure, Petra, come on up here. We need to squish, get a little friendlier. Here we go.
I see everybody. Jesse, right here. You need to, they don't see you. It almost worked.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time. I'll see you, Cindy.
Congratulations. Keep it done, eh?
Good to see you. I meant to bring you that magnet.
Oh, thanks, yeah.
It was a slow month.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Let's move on to the Consent Agenda. Any member want to pull anything from the Consent Agenda today?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item 8C for discussion and review.
8C, okay. Anything else? Not entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda items 8A through 8E excluding 8C.
Second. Motion and second, please vote. Okay, let's take a look at item 8C.
Thank you, Mayor. I was reviewing this proposal to extend city sewer services to this development, and I visited this development. I also checked with our county supervisor and the Department of Developmental Services for the county, and even our county representatives aren't really aware of this. My understanding, this kind of qualifies as one of these Wildcat subdivisions, so I'd like to find out more about what, where, and why we're doing this, and what the potential liabilities might be for the city, particularly after we just heard from the fire chief, and how with our cooperative agreements, even though this is county property and subject to coverage by CAFMA with our cooperative agreements with CAFMA, it could certainly have an impact on our station there right at Iron Springs and Williamson Valley, so maybe if we can get some more information on this.
Okay, very good. Mr. Dotson?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. As far as more information on this district, well, maybe part of it would say that the city has not led or necessarily promoted this development at all. It's a matter of individual property owners in the area that purchased a large parcel in the county, and then it's subsequently been divided up. As residences started to be developed on these parcels in the last, I'd say, six to 10 years that it's been progressing out there, then most recently, well, this will be the second sewer improvement district in that area that individual property owners have come forward and asked to enter into. So unlike a full-fledged platted subdivision where a developer would come in and pay for all infrastructure upfront, and then have that cost onto each individual lot as they sell that lot, this is kind of opposite that direction, where individual property owners have purchased property, and then ultimately, this one and the previous one, and a single individual, or this one, there are two individuals that put forward the money to extend the sewer that has the benefit of multiple properties. They fronted the money, went through the entire normal process as far as permit, design for the sewer system, getting the permit to be able to build it, all inspections to city standards, getting ADQ approval for the sewer system. They have funded that entire process, and now by city code and through reimbursement process, they are asking to set up this district, and then as an individual property connects in, then they would pay that value for the benefit of that sewer to these individual properties, so then they have a means to recoup some of their costs that they have extended to this. Any other questions?
Pretty straightforward. So, does this, this doesn't have any bearing on CAFMA, though? Like, CAFMA covers this, this is outside of any kind of agreement?
The development in general would have impact because there's additional residences in the area, but that was happening either way. On our side, it's the benefit of that we have the potential of these properties beyond city sewer, so that we get that water for recharge, we treat it. We have, many of these properties are immediately adjacent to Willow Creek, so then we do not have septic systems lining right along the creek in order to have the potential impairment of that waterway as well.
Yeah, I mean, I've visited the development. Roads in there are gravel, very narrow, one way in, one way out, so the potential for fire and medical calls, and being able to get to those residents is pretty concerning, even though it's in the county, and we share that CAFMA trucks that are in our station right there at the corner. So as the chief has described, when calls are in conflict, trying to be able to respond to these Wildcat subdivisions can be a concern. So I know this, we're not talking about extending specifically fire protection into this area, but as we support these Wildcat subdivisions with city utilities, it allows more of these types of developments to be, to go forward. And looking at the detail on here, even though this does meet state standards for guarantee of defects in the workmanship, we're only getting a two-year guarantee here, and that's going back to July. So the developer, the builder, is only guaranteeing that this workmanship is only going to be guaranteed until July 2021, which is a very short period of time. And we have seen multiple examples of infrastructure failing throughout our community, and I have a concern about that. So I know it does meet state warranty requirements for construction, but what happens if that sewer line does fail? And then whose responsibility is it to make sure it doesn't impact the entire sewer connections?
After the two-year warranty period ends, then it will be our responsibility under wastewater operations as a city, as it is in all new construction, whether it's a capital improvement project, or a new platted subdivision, or in this instance as well.
Greg, you were talking about them having to live up to our standards. Are we going to be inspecting?
We did inspect the construction.
Okay. And I have another question for you. If in fact, we didn't extend sewer to this area, would they have built anywhere? I know that's a tough question for you to answer, but what I'm wondering is, you know, we're getting the benefit of the sewer, and a septic system is not going bad and draining off into the creek, and we're getting the recharge. What I'm wondering is, what are the downsides of this? And I mean, we would have had to have provided, because of our mutual aid agreement, we would have had to have provided fire protection anyway.
That's correct. In regards to, you asked, you know, would they have built anywhere, anyway? I can answer that, yes. And there were instances out there where there are houses that were designed and permitted through the county, they designed and had a permit to install a septic system, but being that this sewer system was installed, they have chosen to go on to sewer and not put the septic system in.
Wasn't that what we've been trying to achieve all over the place?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Interesting, Greg, because I had a call from a friend that lives out this way, and he was very excited when he saw the manhole covers, and he said, "I want to connect if I can," and because they have city water already, right?
There are a lot of city water customers in this area.
The person I'm talking about has city water.
Okay, yeah. There are a lot of city water customers in this area, or in the surrounding entire area, right in this specific district area, there are a number of these that do not have city water, but we still have the ability of getting the sewer and treating it correctly.
My friend has city water, and he was very excited about the possibility of being able to connect, and because he wants to get off septic. And so I don't really see the disadvantage, Councilman Good. I understand you see that we have more responsibility, but we have the same responsibility for fire because it would be CAFMA, and we don't do the police out there because it's not in the city, so that is the Sheriff's Department. So I just see that we're able to bring people on to our sewer system and recharge and reclaim, and it just is exactly like Councilman Shishka said, what we've been trying to do. So I was pleased when I saw this possibility.
Councilman Blair?
I guess I don't see a downside to this whatsoever. I mean, it is what it is, and most of those properties are already built upon. From my standpoint, question I would have, is the infrastructure that was just put in large enough to take on Hokey Gan if they decided to go off of their septics to handle the extra sewage to the creek?
It would be able to take significantly more properties than what it serves right now, and then ultimately, Hokey Gan, it would come down to the topography as far as which direction it would go.
And I guess that's my point, as we've been talking about all along, is to recapture the sewage, and Hokey Gan is indeed all on city water, which is right next door, and if we can get that much closer to Hokey Gan, and that much cheaper for those folks to hook up, it benefits this community greatly to recharge all the water we're pumping there back into the system. So I see no downside to this.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
What about the potential for this low area to likely be a flooded area, and what would that impact the sewer?
And what would that impact the sewer?
The floodway, uh, the first, the existing sewer is within the flood plain, all the way down through Willow Creek. Uh, essentially as close as Iron Springs Road in Willow Creek and then runs all the way to Willow Creek and Willow Lake Road intersection down through the Willow Creek Channel, uh, within the flood plain. Um, this subdivision here now where, where this sewer is just built is up well outside of the flood, flood plain. And the properties are only able to build, um, in the appropriate locations outside of the flood plain or to build it up.
We're going to need a lift station for this area?
No, it's going gravity.
All right. Thank you.
If no other comments, I entertain a motion on this.
Mayor, I approve, move to approve Resolution 2019-1720.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 6-1.
All right, let's move on to consent ordinance.
Item A, adopt ordinance number 2019-1692, authorizing the purchase and acceptance of a public sewer easement and real property from James 110 Investment LLC and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchases and acceptances. Item B, adopt ordinance number 2019-1691, authorizing the acceptance of Yavapai County-owned portions of Division Street and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance of real property.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt consent ordinance items 9A and 9B.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Not, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item 10A, please.
Mayor and council, this is a public hearing in consideration for a new Series 19 Remote Tasting Room Liquor License from Richard Edwin Schl, Schkl. Thank you. Applicant for Del Rio Springs Vineyard located at 220 West Goodwin Street, Suite Number 2. The application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval. The application fee has been paid and no public comment has been received. And the applicant is in the audience.
Would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about your business? Thank you.
Um, I represent as a partner of two, uh, the Del Rio Springs Vineyard LLP. And we have a vineyard and four, our vineyard or winery and four in the ground vineyards in the Paulding area right now. And we have one planned for the spring in, uh, east side of Chino Valley. So with the development of this new grape region, it's a new cool climate grape region for Arizona. We were excited when the opportunity came for a property to be available for us to have a tasting room here. Um, to go ahead and apply for a tasting room license in the O'Fire Station. And so the plaza is a, is a great spot because I see there is some development and improvements going on in the alley adjacent to that property. So we think this is a great time for us to not only have a tasting there, but become a member of the business community in Prescott.
Awesome.
Well, thank you so much for your investment in the city. I think, uh, you're, you're in a good spot in the old firehouse. You're right.
We believe it is. It's, I think we're, you know, they try to make destinations as they did in Cottonwood. And, and so this, we think with the flying leap in the wine tasting bar in the alley there and then us being there, it'll become, not necessarily be, but becoming a destination for people then.
Well, thank you for sharing today. Appreciate your business. Thank you. Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license application number 19-350 for a new Series 19 Remote Tasting Room for Del Rio Springs Vineyard located at 220 West Goodwin Street, Suite Number 2.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, let's move on to item two, please.
Public hearing in consideration for an owner transfer liquor license application for a Series 6 Bar Liquor License from Amy S. Nations, applicant for the Point Bar and Lounge located at 114 North Montezuma Street. The application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval. The application fee has been paid, no public comment has been received. And I believe the applicant is in, is present today?
Somebody hear from the point? Nope? Okay. All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license number 06130031 for an owner transfer for a Series 6 Bar Liquor License for the Point Bar and Lounge, location 114 North Montezuma Street.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Let's move on to item three.
Mayor and council, this is a consideration for a permanent extension of premises liquor license application for a Series 7 Beer and Wine Bar from Nikhil Patel, applicant for Hotel Vendome located at 230 South Cortez Street. The application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and is being recommended for approval. The application fee has been paid, no public comments have been received. And is the applicant here?
Come on up. This looked very, uh, very creative. I like what you're proposing here.
Yeah, so we currently have a small wine bar inside the hotel. And we've taken over the property next door, the old Cupper's Building. And so we want to kind of join the two properties together, have the outdoor patio space of, of the property next door and then create a back patio and then just where people can go back and forth between the two properties with their beer, wine, and we're going to open a coffee shop in there too.
Yeah, that's great. It's a good use of the property. Very smart. Well, thanks for your business here in the city. We'll entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve recommend, uh, recommendation for liquor license application number 19-008 for a permanent extension of premises for Series 7 Beer and Wine Bar Liquor License for Hotel Vendome located at 230 South Cortez Street.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to regular agenda item 11A, please.
Adopt ordinance number 2019-1690, approving the form and authorizing, authorizing the execution and delivery by the City of a First Purchase Agreement, a First Trust Agreement, an escrow trust agreement and other necessary agreements, instruments and documents, approving the execution and delivery by City of Prescott Municipal Property Corporation of a Second Amendment to Third Supplement to Trust Indenture, approving the sale and execution and delivery of pledged revenue refunding obligations, Series 2019, evidencing all the interests of the owners thereof in the purchase agreement, adopting post issuance tax compliance procedures in connection with issuance of obligations of the city, delegating authority to the Budget and Finance Director of the City to determine certain matters and terms with respect to the foregoing, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Sorry, Marine.
Yeah, you'd think, you'd think Mark could get that condensed.
Um, thank you, Marine, Mayor and Council. Uh, sorry for the long title on this ordinance. We're doing a lot with this ordinance. Um, so we'll try to go through it as simply as we can. We always, uh, review our debt positions that we have, uh, take advantage of the debt markets that are out there. As you know, we recently entered into a WIFIA loan we've been working on for nine months. The market responded right. We moved the loan forward and were able to get a 30-year loan at a real great rate, 1.59%. As we look at the markets, this is a 10-year, uh, bond rate market because that's really where this, uh, this thing that we're talking about lives. Uh, top end is about 3%. The low end is, well, we dipped really low, but the low end is 180, 170 range. Uh, so it's a good time to be looking at our debt positions and see if we can improve our position and therefore save ourselves money so we can provide more money for services to our citizens. This schedule is, is complicated. I probably should put on two forms. The top part, we're looking at just the city's debt position, just to re-familiarize everybody with what we have. Um, these are our bonded debt, not our other debts like landfill closures or pension costs or those type of debt. These are just the loans we have taken out for different, um, projects. We have community facilities districts, the Haciapa districts, about, uh, 350,000 there. We have one special assessment district, very small district out in, uh, the Forbene Park area. The, uh, I'm sorry, yeah. And then we have WIFIA loans. And right now we have about $100 million worth of WIFIA loan. Those are all water and wastewater loans at very good rates, uh, subsidized by EPA at varying degrees depending on the project. What we're talking about today is our municipal property corporation bonds, which is about $25 million outstanding. And I have those detailed on the bottom half of the screen. We currently have three debts outstanding. We have 2010 BABS, which stands for Build America Bond Program. In 2010, if you'll all recall, the bond markets collapsed with the loss of the insurance companies that were insuring public issues. Um, so there was no tax exempt bond market for governments to get money. The government came up with the Build America Bonds Program, which allowed us to issue taxable funds and then be reimbursed from the IRS for the differential between the taxable rate and the tax exempt rate, which allowed us to access debt markets. At that point, we were building road projects. That's what that one was, 89A Granite Dells Parkway. I have three interest rates on that one because it is a taxable issue. The average coupon on those bonds was 6%. That was the taxable interest rate. The subsidized interest rate was supposed to be 3.91%. And it was 3.91% until 2013, when the federal government decided it no longer needed to have a balanced budget and the sequester cuts cut in. Those sequester cuts reduce our, our subsidy that we get from the IRS. So it actually brought our interest rates up. They reduce it by, it depends on the year. It's usually about 7, 9% that it reduces our, um, our, our annual refund. So it's about 4% as opposed to the 3.9%. Uh, that bond, it was issued in 2010. It's callable in 2020, which is nine months off. Uh, so if we were looking here today, trying to take advantage of this bond market, we could look at this bond specifically. The other two bonds, another road project, Winston Valley Road, issued in 2011, straight debt financing. It was a private placement to BBVA at 418. It was the interest rate. It's callable 18 months from now in July of 2021. Then we had the refunding of our original purchase of the Big Chino Water Ranch up there at 2014. It's not refundable until 2024. And of course, uh, it'll mature in 2034. So what we did when we were looking at the two issues is we looked at the one we could refund today as an option. And we also, uh, started conversations with BBVA. I was looking to see if we had a rep, we don't have a representative from them today. But we were talking to them because they held the 2011 bond. And we said, hey, if we look to place this full new refunding issue with you, will you let us refund our 2011 bond at the lower market interest rates that we have today? Instead of waiting 18 months from now, where rates could be higher, they could be lower. It takes that uncertainty off the table. And it would be a private placement bond. They agreed. They came up with a, a rate, which is obviously a little higher than the 10-year municipal rate because, you know, they're giving up something, uh, that higher interest rate. So this, uh, slide here compares those two options. Just going to a public offering, uh, we assume interest rates are going to be where they are today. Frankly, if we do a public offering, I'm not going to be able to get that to the public until late December or January because I got to run through rating agencies. I got to do a lot of other process, which will also have additional cost. The bank loan option, which BBVA, uh, did, you know, agree to, we were able to lock that rate at a 2.3. That would give us, uh, the ability to refund both the 2010 BABS and the 2011 issue. The refunding, just the one on public offering, we're guessing we'd be about 1.1 million in savings. Again, we don't know where rates are going to be in January. But if we had to issue today, it would be about that. If we refund the two with BBVA, we'll have close to 1.5 million dollars in savings over the life of the bond. That's, of course, goes straight to the streets fund, be available for additional streets projects. Uh, there's additional numbers up there. It ends up, uh, being a present value savings of 1.2 million. It has a net present value savings as a percentage of the refunding of 7.5%, which is really good. You definitely would look at that. Um, I think that is definitely the best option. That's how I wrote, had the ordinance put together, was to take that approach. So that, that's the one issue we're talking about. Another issue with the ordinance is these bonds have been issued through the MPC board. I'm hitting the wrong button. The MPC board, the city's been quite, quite, um, lucky in our MPC board, I think. Uh, I have the current board members up there. Our president is Steve Burton. He's a senior vice president, uh, with County, our country bank. Um, we have Vic Peraboom, our vice president. He's been on MPC for 22 years. He's a local CPA. Uh, Robert Recker, former councilman. He also, you know, local, um, industry with, um, Print Pack for many years. Uh, he's been on there for 34 years. He's currently retired. Kevin Lane with Lane Brothers, he's investment advisor. He's principal owner over there. And Ken Foot, of course, Footworks, uh, been on there five years. Great group of guys, very intelligent, very able to handle these financial issues. Um, we've been fortunate when you look at other cities. Did it again. What are we talking about with MPC? The MPC was set up in, this is a complete history of the MPC and their issues. In 1972, the city of Phoenix built the Civic Center downtown in Phoenix. And there was litigation about how they got the financing for that. Through that litigation, it was determined that the only way you could issue debt in Arizona without voter approval was to set up a nonprofit corporation to pledge revenues to and give a lease back and this kind of shell game, if you will, to issue debt. So every other city jumped on board and issued and made MPCs, including the city of Prescott, a year after that in 72. And we used it for many projects over the years and many financings. About 107 million dollars worth of projects over the years and refundings. Um, over the last several years, the market, uh, and the legal bond councils really do not see that the MPC is any longer needed. The markets are comfortable with the direct revenue pledge of the city of Prescott. Um, more of an open issuance of debt as opposed to this MPC. So with this refunding, we're proposing, and we've talked to the board about it, starting to phase out the MPC. This new bond, this refunding bond, would be a direct obligation of the city of Prescott, a pledge of our revenues, um, in the open market privately placed with BBVA. And, um, we would be able to refund two of the current MPC loans. One, the BABS is refundable in July. So it would be, all the proceeds would be put into an escrow with, uh, interest bearing to meet that July date. So there was money there for that. The BB, BBVA loan would be refunded immediately. This would start the approach. We would have one MPC loan remaining that is, um, out there until, um, as we saw on the slide, it's out there till 2024. It's, you know, what happens at 2024, I guess we'll all see at 2024 when I'm standing up here explaining it to you. A lot of options exist depending on what the council wishes to do with the, the market. Obviously, that loan will have a balance of 6.2 million, um, at that point to refund. Could be rolled into a new refunding issue or it could just be paid off, which would allow the council to consider other options with that property. With a tax exempt financing on it, P3 issues, things like that are very difficult for the council to consider. And again, 6.2 million, we saved just about 11 million on that WIFIA loan that came in so low. Well, the lower pain, we'll save about 11 million over the life of that loan. So there will be proceeds available for council to make a decision in '24. But today we are just looking at refunding those top two into a city of Prescott bond. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions or drone on or show you another graph.
Uh, thank you for that presentation, Mark. Any questions or comments from the council? All right, uh, public comment?
No, Mayor.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2019-1690.
I just want the public to understand that we're not extending the terms of these loans. Uh, sometimes there's a concern about that, that your total interest, uh, burden could increase even though your rates go down. So I did talk to Mark about that and I just want to make sure people know that we're not extending these terms and those savings numbers are legitimate.
Thank you.
Yep, we have a motion. Do your second.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Let's move on to item 11B, please.
Approval of the proposed settlement in Hidden Heights v. City of Prescott.
Thank you, Your Honor. The action item before you, Your Honor, it's an occupational hazard. You're moving on up. Mayor, Council. This action is for approval of a proposed settlement agreement in the case of Hidden Heights versus the city of Prescott. Hidden Heights owns a piece of property, approximately 40 acres, off of Iron Springs Road outside of the city limits. In 2016, Hidden Heights sued the city alleging that we breached a 1965 Water Service Agreement. They sought $3.5 million in damages. Mediation was held on September 17, 2018. The parties agreed that they would resolve the case, and the city would provide water to the subject lands, and that each side would pay their own attorney's fees. We will not be paying damages of $3.5 million. This is basically what's considered a walk away, where both parties kind of agree to just walk away, assume their own attorney's fees, and the city will provide water to this Hidden Heights property. They will be required to connect to city sewer. When they develop the property, they will pay all normal development impact fees. When they develop the property, they will pay the added rate, water rates, which I think is a 30% surcharge right now into county. It will allow for an approximate development of 37 units. This property is really constrained by geography and its underlying zoning. They're not going to be able to put too many residential units on it. That's what they're proposing to do. It'll require about 6.3 acres of, 6.3 acre feet of water annually. And once the council approves the settlement agreement, the case will be formally dismissed if that's what you're wanting to do.
Thank you, councillor. Any questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve settlement agreement with Hidden Heights LLC, contract number 2020-0181.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item 11C, please.
Award of city contract to Fan Contracting Incorporated for construction of the Airport Trunk Main Phase 2B project. And award of city contract to Lion Engineering for post-design and engineering services for the Airport Trunk Main 2B project and approval of night work.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just kidding, Matt. Thank you, Mayor and Council, Eric Bay with Public Works. This next item has three parts to it, the largest being the award of the construction contract for Airport Trunk Main Phase 2B, the next being post-design and engineering services to Lion Engineering for the same. And then last but not least, approval of night work that may be required in and around the Hanson area so we don't interrupt their operations during the day and possibly for our boring contractor. So I'm very excited to be presenting this project today because this is going to be the largest collection system project that the city has ever undertaken. In addition, once it's complete and connected to Phase 1, which is already complete, and Phase 2A of the trunk main project, which is already complete, cumulatively, this is going to be the most important and most critical piece of sewer main in our entire inventory. So let me walk you through the project. The project begins up here on the Peavine Trail, near the Peavine Trail at Center Force, at a stubout that we left for ourselves with the Phase 2A project. It continues south to the AED parcel and then over west to our existing surface water recharge main parcel. And this run of the project is going to be very complex, very difficult to build because we have several existing conflicts with the existing trunk main. We do have to bench out and create some room for the new trunk main to be built. And addition, the grades in this area are razor thin, so there's no margin for error. So once we hit this corridor, we parallel our surface water recharge main all the way down to State Route 89. This again is going to be even more difficult than that first part because of the depths that are going to be required to install this, and again, razor thin slopes on that pipe. So very limited margin for error. Once we get to State Route 89A, we're going to bore under it with a jack and bore technique. That's going to be very interesting to see. And once it's complete, we will have a 48-inch trunk main inside of a 72-inch steel casing under the highway without interrupting traffic flow on the 89A. After the jack and bore, we continue over to Larry Caldwell, where we connect into an existing manhole that was installed with Phase 1 of the trunk main project in cooperation with the Walden Development into a manhole that's waiting for us that we knew was going to connect to Phase 2B one of these days. On the south side of the Walden project, we're connecting into another stubout that we left for ourselves with the south side of the Phase 1 project. And then I would say that the last segment would be the easiest segment, except for at the very southern portion, we're reconnecting into existing sewer, and that's going to require some pretty extensive and lengthy bypass pumping. So that's the project in a nutshell. As you can see, very significant, very large magnitude, extremely complex. And as I mentioned before with Phase 2A, we're doing it right. We're installing centrifugally cast polymer fiber reinforced pipe, Hobus pipe. We're installing solid cast polymer manholes, and we're installing composite ring and covers. This project is designed to last all of our lifetimes, and field data suggests that it's going to last well over 100 years. We don't want to have to get back into this corridor again anytime soon. So city staff publicly advertised this project. We received a total of five bids. While performing the evaluation of the bid, it was determined that the apparent low bid was not responsive or responsible. Therefore, city staff moved on to reviewing the next lowest bid. While performing the evaluation of the second lowest bid, it was determined that that bid was both responsive and responsible. Staff held a pre-award meeting with the second low bid contractor, Fan Contracting, to discuss the bid, any concerns they had, any issues they saw with the bid. And I'm happy to report that they're all green lights, thumbs up, ready to go. With this information, city is recommending award today to the second low bid contractor. Funding for this project will be through a low-interest loan with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. And with that, we're ready to go, and I'll take any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you, Eric. It is a big project. It's very important. You get to do some cool stuff like boring under 89A. That's going to be quite interesting. You said that's 72-inch?
72-inch casing.
Yeah, that's crazy. And I appreciate the fact you're not interrupting the traffic there. That's very helpful. Any questions, comments from the council? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to recommend, excuse me, let me clear my throat, and I got off on my page, so maybe somebody else should recommend it. Hold on a second. Move to recommend city contract number 2018-201A1.
Second. Wait, are we on the wrong one?
Wrong one.
Excuse me.
Yeah, it's the one above, Steve.
Move to award contract number 2020-057.
Second.
Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Then this is kind of a couple more parts here.
Yeah, one more.
Move to award city contract number 2020-056 to Lion Engineering.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
And the third part, move to approve night work.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you, and we'll move on to item 11D.
Approve amendment number one to city contract to Fan Environmental LLC for Phase 2 design of the Airport Production Well #5 Design/Build Project.
All right, I'm back. This next item is going to be the second step in the design-build process for the installation of a new production well in the airport zone. In the first step, we drilled the hole, we tested the metrics, we came up with a schematic design that was going to work for this well site. Now that we have that data, this next step is to move to detailed design and also to develop a guaranteed maximum price, a GMP, for constructing the well site itself. And this, this well site is going to be the third well site in our airport zone. Now that the testing data has come back on this site, we know that it is also going to be our largest producing well in the airport zone by more than double our next largest well. So when those testing metrics came back, we saw two things happen instantaneously. We knew that the redundancy and reliability in this zone was going to be significantly increased, and we saw our water superintendent do backflips when he figured out how much water we're going to get out of this well. So obviously fantastic news for the city. City staff selected this design-build team from a combination of a competitive qualification submittal and previous experience designing city well sites. We have negotiated the contract with the design-build team, and we are recommending award at this time. With that, I'll take any questions.
All right, any questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve city contract number 2018-201A1.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you for that. Let's move on to item 11E, please.
Approval of city contract with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated for design and other engineering services for the Public Safety Drill Grounds Drainage and Utilities Improvement Study.
Mayor, if you would, I'd like to weigh in on this a little bit. As many of you know that have been out to the drill grounds next to the transfer station, we have ongoing drainage problems out there. And there's been a lot of discussion over the years about how we purpose the site in a better manner. Right now, it sources to the drill grounds. There's plenty of times a year where there's standing water on the drill ground. Is that a fair thing to state? And as also you folks know, it's contiguous to the creek in that area. What we need to do if we're going to utilize this site to its maximum purpose, whatever that purpose may be, is to fix the drainage problem. So regardless of usage of the site long-term, this is a city asset that is in disrepair and needs to be addressed. And the first step to addressing that is to do a design of the drainage. I don't know if you guys wanted to add anything to that, but...
Yes, I will. Good afternoon again, Mayor and Council. A couple things, just from a macro perspective of fire usage of the drill grounds. As I alluded to in the earlier presentation, we have a number of hours of training that we have to conduct any given year to the tune of 200-plus hours for structural firefighting, a multitude of technical rescues such as tranching and shoring, and understanding that as emergency responders to the community. And as much as we've been able to leverage our use of technologies through video conferencing, online training, the fire service by its very nature and its nexus still remains somewhat of a blue collar profession. And with that, we need to do hands-on type training that, you know, it'd be nice if we could go elsewhere in the community, but that comes with its own secondary and tertiary issues such as exposure and legal commitment. A couple things, the current, and Eric Stewart will get into the finer points, but it, the current system was put in place very piecemeal. Some of the existing infrastructure is well over 40 years old. And as such, you know, we have to continue to provide a service to this community in the regards to having a trained force. So that's our perspective. We've looked at alternatives of what we might be able to do differently, and really, we still need to be able to do multi-company exercises and drills, and in the public domain, that's just not pleasurable or feasible. The other piece to that is, in its current condition, if we were to continue, you see secondary issues coming about as added wear and tear on our apparatus as well as our personal protective equipment. So with that, we're looking forward to hopefully getting a favorable acceptance of that, and I'll turn it over to Eric for the added finer details.
Thank you, Chief. Eric Stewart, Public Works, Mayor and Council. From a Public Works perspective, we were asked to help out our partners at FIRE, to kind of look at the existing infrastructure and give kind of a perspective on it and put together this proposal for work done by Civil Tech. Where's my arrow? So Mr. Mar did mention drainage. You see on this image, on the right side of the image, you see the hillside, which is about 10 acres that flows onto this site. We did a quick analysis in the lower left-hand side of this screen here, and everything you see in aqua blue there, that's basically areas that have potential for ponding. And of course, the upper right-hand image is something that the FIRE provided. So part of the services provided by Civil Tech will be topographic survey and a drainage analysis of this facility. Second, we looked at existing pavement condition. On the lower left, you see what is the parking area for attendees that do training here. And for what pavement, we did find in the upper right-hand corner, that's what it looks like. It has zero service life left. One of the, some of the items in the proposal by Civil Tech will be to do geotechnical evaluation. They'll do boring on-site, and with that, they'll do pavement design in any infrastructure design that requires bearing on soil. We also looked at existing electrical system out there. Civil Tech will be doing a full evaluation of the existing electrical system and do a master plan design for the electrical. One thing I'd like to point out is the, in the pole, that's a light pole on the left side. One thing that got me was the light head that actually had fallen off, but the other thing was, I took this, I needed to take a photo, so I took this paper and I shoved it in a crack in the pole you can see there. And so you can tell this is very dilapidated infrastructure. And lastly, I will be looking at the existing sanitary sewer and water facilities. I don't know if you're aware, there's two existing septic systems on this, and so part of the design, the master plan work will be to design a gravity sewer for on-site and also abandon the existing septic tanks. And then also look at the design of the water system on-site. And from what I'm understanding, basically, when a fire goes out and does training out there, they don't have adequate fire pressure to do the training they're intended to do. And the good news is, is our partners up the hill, the slope, Storm Ranch, they're actually bringing some new infrastructure on Sundog Ranch Road that these wet utilities will be connecting with. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for that. Questions, comments from the council? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2020-064 with Civil Tech Engineering for engineering services for the Public Safety Drill Grounds Drainage and Utilities Infrastructure Study in the amount of $97,784.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item 11F, please.
Award of city contract to Built Right Manufacturing for the purchase, delivery, and installation of a replacement boom crane for the transfer station.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mangarelli and council members. I am Molly Mangrich with your Public Works Department, where I serve as the superintendent for solid waste. The item I have today is a request to award a city contract for the purchase, or to Built Right Manufacturing for the purpose of a replacement boom crane. You know, as I was preparing for today, I thought about, what do people think of when they imagine a crane in their mind? Is it a large, large mobile crane located out on a busy construction site? Or is it a truck-mounted crane that has an elevated bucket holding an APS technician as we drive by? But what I'm speaking to is a specific crane manufactured and designed for use in a waste handling facility such as ours in a transfer station. Boom crane is a really critical piece to our operations, and throughout the day, I want to explain that we are busy all day long. We have our loader operators that are continually pushing loads of trash or recyclables, depending upon what time of day we're doing this, into below-ground trailers. And people keep coming in and bringing in more materials, and our crane operators at the same time are taking that crane that we have now, and they are dispersing that waste throughout the body of that trailer and then compacting it to ensure that we maximize that volume on the trailer without exceeding A.D.O. regulations as we send it down the road to either to Landfill and Dewey or to the Materials Recovery Facility in Phoenix, where we have an intergovernmental agreement with them for recyclables. So the crane is the muscle of a transfer station, and the one we have now is 25 years old. And the one we have now is 25 years old and is experiencing both hydraulic and structural failures, which we have been fixing for several years now. Currently, oh, and regarding the bidding process, I need to begin with a correction to your council memo. I made an error in the dates of the publication in which the ad was placed. And I want to, for the record, state that the advertised dates were August 19th and August 25th and not September. Two companies attended our mandatory bid meeting out at the transfer station, where we took them outside and we walked around the transfer station. We looked at the location for the placement of where the crane would be installed, where the motor mounts would be installed and entry to the transfer station. We had a good discussion with the vendors. And one company submitted a bid and one company submitted an email declining to bid as they couldn't meet the required specifications and contract documents. I stand for any questions?
Molly, thank you. 25 years on the existing crane, that's pretty good.
She's done good.
Yeah. And this one's coming out of Minnesota, is that right?
That's correct. It's, they say it's about a 19-week build.
Okay.
Once approval is provided.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2020-075.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
We're going to end with Paul Bear Bryant today. Show class, have pride and display character. If you do, winning takes care of itself. This meeting is adjourned.